Are you okay, Sarah?
Yeah.
You ready to go?
I'll work on it while we're doing stuff. I don't know what's wrong with it.
Terry?
Good evening, welcome. We're so glad you could join us this evening. I would invite you to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move into the superintendent's report. Dr. Henson.
Thank you very much. A couple of items for you this evening, actually, maybe I should say several items for you this evening. I do want to let you know that we are interviewing finalists for the demographer. And so, as you know, we put out an RFP a number of weeks ago for a demographer to really take an in-depth look at the school district, look at areas that are re-greening, look at shifts in our population, look at buildings that maybe are overcapacity or undercapacity. And so, certainly by our next board meeting, we may be ready to make a presentation to you in relation to a services for a demographer that will allow us to have at least a 10-year plan in relation to the size and scope of our school district, buildings, boundaries, and looking at grade level expectations for the future. So, stay tuned. You'll probably have that at the next meeting. We have, as you know, received a lot of comment in relation to safety and security as we've gone around the district. And so, we have architects that are looking at buildings to really try to decide, do we have secure and safe entrances? Can we do other things? Looking at electronic means that might provide assistance as well. And so, if you would like, I can take you to several districts to look at buildings that this is occurring as well. And so, but those plans are still being developed by architects as we look at that. One of the questions is, well, how do you fund this? Well, we're going to talk about that a little later in the board meeting this evening. Speaking of architects, we are refining our look at Antioch Middle School to say, can we repurpose that building? And if so, for what purpose? And part of the question is, can we combine a number of our district-level admin buildings to a building, which would help us in several aspects? And so, we're still in the process of trying to refine a potential plan in relation to the repurposing of Antioch Middle School. We did have oral arguments in the state this last week in relation to a case called the Gannon case. You know, certainly, we can project, we may see a decision prior to the legislative session. We don't know that for sure. And we'll just have to monitor the Supreme Court and see what happens in relation to the Gannon case. I do want to remind all of us tonight that, over the last several days, we've lost some individuals in our school district, certainly students, but also individuals that have served our students for many, many years. And so, as we talk about all of these things that are really very important to us, it's a reminder to us that life is also very important in every day that we spend with our students and with our employees. That's what really matters in the scope of every single thing that we do. So, tonight, our condolences to those that have lost children, can't imagine, those that have lost also spouses and adults that have served these kids for such a long period of time. Thank you.
And we have no one for open forum this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of September 23rd.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Levens and Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, seven zero. Move on to the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Bissfield. Is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries, seven zero. Move on to approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that any board member would like removed from the consent agenda? Mrs. Neber.
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries, seven zero. And with that, we move through educational services, human resources, business services, and on to the action item L, which is educational services. Dr. Henson.
Thank you. The high school program planning guide, it's the time of the year that we're looking at so many things for the 14, 15 school year. I know it seems we just started this school year, even though we're a fourth of the way through, but looking at the high school program planning guide for 14, 15. So, I'll introduce Dr. Strike. And I think you have some other individuals with you tonight. I'll allow you to introduce those individuals. But thank you, Dr. Strike, for the presentation.
Thank you. Anything that's wrong in the document, it's my fault. Everything that's right is Kim's. So, with that standing statement, thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. The document that you have before you, we're open to any questions that you might have. We thought, because Kim worked directly with the building-level associate principals that are in charge of curriculum, as well as the resource specialists, she might be the best person to answer the questions. And I'll try to jump in if there's any other issues that I might be able to address. So, with that, I will present Kim Barney, our new curriculum and instruction director. So, Kim, take it away.
Good evening. It's my pleasure this evening to summarize for you the changes that we are proposing for the programs, studies for high school. I'm going to go through, I mean, individual categories, if that's okay, and then we'll stop and see if there's any questions. So, we're going to start with the proposed new courses. And as you're aware, there are seven courses that are listed there as being proposed. All of these courses were created with the intention in mind to expand opportunities for our students, as you would expect new courses would do. The choir men select was to attract more male vocalists and singers. Chemistry one honors is to better prepare students for chemistry two and AP. Physics one honors AP is to better prepare students for the way they're designing the physics AP tests in the future where they're dividing them into two parts. The French one-two accelerated is an opportunity for our students to accelerate if they are currently taking other foreign languages or world languages, or if they have already taken that, because we know a lot of language builds upon itself. So, it's just an opportunity for them to learn an additional language in a quicker manner. IB film studies SL and IB film studies HL replace down below, you'll see some IB theater courses that we're proposing to be deleted. These would replace those, and the staff feel like this is a better fit for the students' needs. And then, the seventh course that you see listed there is the civil engineering and architecture honors. And this is just an additional option for students who are interested in the field of civil engineering. So, that's kind of a gamut of the new courses and overview. Do you have any questions around those courses?
Ms. Smith?
I have one question. I look at physics is honors and AP. I'm wondering why chemistry one is just honors and not an AP course.
Okay.
There's actually two parts. One, the chemistry piece is, think about, chem two is the AP piece. Chem one is honors to accelerate students that are hoping to take the AP bio, or the AP chemistry in the next year. So, you would have a traditional chemistry class, chem one, or you could, if you wanted to accelerate that opportunity, preparing you for AP chemistry the next year, this would be a higher level and more rigorous opportunity to approach.
So, in physics, you would get, you could have AP credit in the first year, but chemistry has to be in the second year. Do you happen to know about College Now? I'm sorry, I'm throwing this at you. Can you get College Now credit for, you only get it for, I guess, chemistry two then? Would that be correct?
I believe so.
Well, first of all, what often happens, courses will be, will have an AP designation and honors designation. If the student so chooses to not take the AP exam, then we would not place that on their transcript.
Right. They would see the honors, though. Right. Okay. Well, I'll ask, I'm curious about College Now.
The College Now, okay, that's great. He's looking, so we'll see if we can, I think so, but I don't want to speak without checking.
I understand. Thank you. I appreciate you checking. And we don't, I don't have to know tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent. I have more of a generic question on new courses.
Okay.
I'm making an assumption that all of these are only offered if indeed there's enough enrollment, or do we have some of these that would be standard?
Hmm, I think they were all enrollment-based, but let me double-check that as well.
Patty, to answer your question, the chem, the only, the chem two honors AP is the only College Now offer, whereas chem one with honors would not have that designation.
Great.
And the physics piece, physics one AP does have a College Now component. Many schools will designate, or many districts will designate, I'm glad it's science that you're asking about, but many schools will designate a College Now course and an AP, and basically code that the same, simply because students can then take the option of either taking it for College Now if that fits more into their planning, college planning guide, as opposed to taking the AP piece. And we all know, part of the reason is, if you're not going to score three, four, or five on the AP test, you want to pay the credit for the elective credit.
Just as a point of information, I know of a freshman at University of Virginia who is now, all of his College Now classes were accepted from Shawnee Mission High School, so it's a great opportunity. That's why I was curious about the College Now.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, as I skimmed through, I think I've caught them all, and they're enrollment-based.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Dr. Denny?
I think this is a sort of a philosophical question, so not directed toward what you're presenting tonight, but as I look at the graduation requirements, for many years, it said we require 23 units for graduation. And some years ago, I remember being at a high school where a senior sort of proudly exclaimed that he only had to come for two classes and the rest, had the rest of the time off. And I think that speaks to the ability to take classes in the first three years and then maybe not. And I just kind of wonder, again, philosophically and not for a decision tonight, are we, are we missing something by not requiring a few more units for graduation?
If you don't mind, I'll jump into that now. I never had a loss to expound on what I think's right, even though mostly, the rest of the world does not believe in what I believe. But most parents assume that we, as educators, as school, as a school district, have the best intentions for their children. So, you know, not saying this would happen in Shawnee Mission, but if we ask for the bar to be set here, we're going to rise to the level of where the bar is set. The higher the bar is set, usually you get what you aim for. So, if you go in and say, there's only 23 credits to graduate, many parents are going to say, you know, that's exactly what you need, and you can take apart schedule for your senior year. One of the things I would propose, and this would be Dr. Chapman to be involved as well, it'd be interesting to do a transcript analysis, we've done that in my past, and look to see, first of all, how many kids take more than what is required to graduate? Step two is, when they took, for lack of a better term, their senior year off, because we only require three math, three science to graduate, did they save themselves for college, because they think they're going to really have a hard freshman year, so we take the senior year off because, you know, we're saving ourselves for college? Usually, that doesn't bear well for the future. The second piece, or the third piece that kind of ties into that transcript analysis is looking at their electives. Are they doing what I did when I was in school, and I selected the electives by people I wanted to be in class with, be it boyfriend, girlfriend, friends, whatever? And then, there's really no focus on my electives, so that when I go through the plan, I'm just taking whatever, just so that I can have a smorgasbord approach. Many of the districts that have done those transcript analysis find that it provides a laser focus for students if you change that graduation requirement, and also add, for a variety of things, requirements like personal finance, I know the board has talked a little bit about, I'm just brainstorming with you, career exploration. If you have ever had your children go through college, you know it's a pretty expensive career exploration. Do that in our freshman summer.
Yeah, if you had another year or two to college because you changed your major, that's a big deal.
So, yes, we do need to look at that, and I think that's something that we can't just do in a knee-jerk reaction. We need to be very careful.
I think it does need to be thoughtfully considered. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Then we will move down to the deleted courses. We had seven courses that we are proposing to be removed or deleted. Humanities and World Literature honors and International Economics Law were all part of the CIS program, or Center for International Studies curriculum, that no longer is in, exists. And those courses were still on the books, so to speak, but the enrollment was so low they haven't been offered recently, so the recommendation was to delete those. Music theory half-unit option, we're keeping the, there was a half-unit and a full unit, or full, yeah, full-year option. There's really not a curriculum for semester, so students really need to take the entire year if they're going to take that class. So, we're just requesting that we remove that option, as it's not a good one for students. And then, IB chemistry one SL would be replaced by IB chemistry one SL honors. And then, IB, the two theater courses, I already mentioned, the two that we are proposing to add, would actually replace those. So, any questions on the deleting courses?
I'm only curious in how theater and film replace each other. Isn't one a drama and one more the mechanics of filming?
Yes. And I think it was partially student interest and just the future of the industry. They just felt like that was more appropriate, because then the notes, when I looked at the rationale, what was explained, it was just better met the students' needs to fit into those programs.
Good question, then.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, for changes, guess what? It's, you can reflect a little bit, and I'm going, you know, it'd be pretty impossible for the Board of Education to look at the changes and say, what are these changes? So, in the program, if you will bear with us, for the middle school program of studies, you will have italicized and/or strike marks to indicate all the changes that took place, because really, unless you were diligent, like I know all of you were, and you pulled up this program of study from 2013, 14, and you compared the course codes, course names, and you went through that and said, well, I see they've taken three words out of the third line, you probably would not have known that. So, in our case, we were trying to be ambiguous so that you would not question this, but honestly, we're willing to answer any questions you might have.
Sweet. Okay. You want me to summarize the changes? Would that be helpful?
Summary would be great. Thank you.
We had four classes that we were recommending scheduling changes, and that is just in how we offer the course, to provide a more flexible schedule for our students. So, it's just in how the course is offered and how it can fit into their schedule. We had a total of seven courses were proposing grade level changes. Five of those, we are adding additional grade levels to be, the course could be available to a wider span of kids that way, so again, more opportunities. And we had two, Arabic two and Chinese two, that we're proposing, we would actually remove ninth grade or freshman year, because the prerequisite is the level one of that course, they can't take that till their freshman year, so you really can't take the level two courses as a freshman. So, that's just kind of a cleanup edit there, if you will. Prerequisite change, we had five courses, or six, it looks like, five, that had changes to prerequisites, and these were predominantly due to some name changes, we're going to talk about here in a minute, and/or changes in career tech ed or AP programming, just to better sequence our courses for students. Any questions on schedule changes, grade level changes, or prereq changes?
Questions?
Okay. The next 10 courses listed are changes in course names, and all of these were proposed to better reflect the actual course content. So, just to clarify for students and better alignment for what the courses really represent. We had one change in course number, and that was due to, we found that we were actually sharing one course number between two courses, and we needed to clean that up. So, again, another little edit that we caught. And then, we had the biggest bulk of the changes were in what's content change, and those were primarily all revisions to descriptions, and there were 28 of those. And those revised descriptions were created to better align with the course content, the new standards in the different areas of science, social studies, and Kansas College Career Readiness, or Common Core, and to increase the rigor across all contents. So, they're just a richer, more robust description to better reflect the course content. You probably noticed there was a change to almost every, if not every, world language description, and that was to clarify the amount of instruction that would actually be conducted in the target language. So, to delineate level one, to level two, to level three, where we get to level four, where the entire class is taught in the target language. So, that was the reason for that. So, any questions on any of that?
Dr. Denny?
Well, it's, it's just that I noticed that there's no Arabic one or Chinese one. Was there any language change needed in those, since they're in the?
I don't think so. I think that was just Arabic and Chinese would be introduced, or students would be exposed to. It was, it was, it didn't need to be changed. That's how the original description was, but building upon the two, three, and four, they wanted to better delineate that.
Right. Mrs. Bissfield, if you have a question?
Yes, and mine, it's in the world language descriptions, and some of it may be really more editorial than actual. Under French, you have one, two, three, four, five, and five HAP. And I think on the page, we go just, when you're reading about it, you only go from French four to French five.
Not that, five, it's listed twice.
Not the plain five.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Is that correct?
Yep.
The other thing I wondered in reading all this, is in several of them, we do put in the fact that indeed, more than one level may be taught. Is it not done in all levels possibly?
It's, yeah, it's enrollment, somewhat enrollment-driven, in where they can teach multiple levels at once.
Right, but we don't say that in each description.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. That could just be an inconsistency?
Okay.
Probably.
And that's what I wondered, because I do know some of them do that. I certainly know that Latin has all levels taught, and it's not mentioned there, so I'm just thinking if people are looking through it, it would help for them to know that.
Okay, great feedback. Okay. Anything else on those? And then, the last two categories, the consideration for college is just an update on the career information for the career pathways and clusters from KSDE, or the Kansas State Department of Education, as well as information from Johnson County Community College, who we partner with to get those articulation agreements. And then, the additional information is just, we put in the revised policies instead of using the ones that have been changed. So, that's the summary of the changes.
Great. Any other questions? Comments?
I will say one other thing, just on that career pathways piece from JCC, just make sure you know, when you go to that web link, it shows the 2013-14 school year, because they've not updated that. So, that's why we added the extra wording within the document to talk about, that you need to go to that website, because it will be updated for the 14-15 school year, and yet, JCC does not have that information updated, because they're worrying about finishing up the 2013-2014 school year.
Right. Mrs. Smith?
What's the difference, this may be the wrong situation here, but what's the difference between, it's an articulation agreement between our high schools and the community college for credit for no cost to the student? How does that differ from QuickStep? I'm not sure I understand the difference.
Okay, QuickStep is, okay, the ones you were referencing are in the career tech ed or the CTE pathways, and that's through Senate Bill 151, I think, don't quote me exactly right on that, where the governor passed that the tuition is free to students that are in high-need career areas, and so, they can enroll in those courses. And if they get their certifications, then not only does the district receive some compensation to offset the transportation and the costs that would be incurred, but the student's tuition is also free. The QuickStep, we have, like with Algebra III, for instance, which used to be, I'm going to say pre-calculus was the original name, and now it's Algebra III, if hopefully my memory's correct. That is a course where it's through QuickStep, it's similar to College Now, but in math, sometimes they do QuickStep programs in Juco, because, one thing, it allows more flexibility with our instructors. If teachers don't have a master's in math, per se, they can't teach College Now, but they can teach QuickStep. So, it's a way to provide that opportunity for our students to get dual credit, both at high school credit as well as college credit, through that. So, they're just very different programs through Johnson County, just like College Now is different, QuickStep is different, and then the career tech pathways is different.
So, if I understand correctly, College Now is paid for by the student.
Uh-huh.
QuickStep is paid for by the student.
Yes.
But can be taken on the college campus.
Yes.
And the career pathways are classes that have been deemed necessary for our economic futures in the state of Kansas.
High needs, yes.
And so, they don't have to be paid for by the student.
There are some identified certification areas, is what they call them, or fields that the governor and his task force that developed that have identified as high-need areas, and those are the ones that the students receive, would receive free tuition. And then, there are other, you could take other courses in career tech ed that don't fall onto that line, but the ones that are free are because of the high needs, and to get more high school kids into those programs.
And Algebra III would seem to me to be part of that engineering, we, so, but it's a real defined list.
Yeah, Algebra III is, yes, it's very well, very specific, very well-defined. Algebra III, yes, math does, there's a lot of crossover between regular core courses and career tech ed courses, but these are what we used to call voc-tech or voc-ed courses only, not what we think of as typical high school curriculum.
Thank you, because I did not understand the difference between those.
No, it is confusing. There's a, there's a lot to think about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a couple other, and again, sort of general, on page six, and this is one I'm just not aware of as having, and maybe someone can share with me what it is, leadership and community partnership on page six. And I don't know where that is. It sounds like it has something to do with our volunteer programs, many of which are outside of the curriculum.
Yep, that is.
CCC.
Yeah, it's part, is it part of FACS? Okay. Oh, it is. It's part of FACS, which is career tech ed, family consumer science, and it's just one of the standard courses that we've offered as part of that. It's not new. So, what specifically is your question?
I just was curious, the way it read, it sounded like it was the volunteer program, which I'm assuming really is just probably at one high school at this point, for it to be curriculum. Most of the volunteer, community service-type programs in the district are not curriculum-based.
And I'd have to look, but a lot of the career tech ed courses where they, they do want to make a connection to the community, it's one of the application-level courses, so that may be what this is, because it is for, yeah, I bet it is, because it's, grade level is 12, and it's to connect our kids to, out in the community where they're applying some of the skills that they've learned in the, what they call introductory and technical courses.
So, it's come along more with the career and technical.
So, yeah, it's, it's part of the career tech ed, and that's the whole emphasis, is to get the kids from classroom curriculum out into the workplace, and get those skills, practice those skills before they are out in the community market.
I do have two editorial changes, just that you're going to need to look into and see what the right numbers are. On our international baccalaureate pages for each of the On our international baccalaureate pages for each of the schools, at Shawnee Mission East and Shawnee Mission Northwest, we seem to have divergent numbers of, number of schools and number of countries.
Great question. So I went to the IV website, and we're going to remove those numbers because IV's website under the facts page, iv.org, will tell you that, guess what, the numbers change daily. So instead of putting numbers in there that we can't defend,
We can't qualify, exactly.
We're going to remove the numbers, so thank you for pointing it out. That's a great point. Live and learn.
That's right.
Any other questions?
I don't know.
Doctor Denny.
Toward the back, we have an additional section, or additional information starts on page 74, which is our policy for discrimination and harassment. But I, I wonder, since we passed some policy earlier this year on bullying, is this, is this an appropriate place for some of those if the parents and students are going to
Okay, here's a question. Think for a sec, and I don't have that, an answer, but I, I will ask, I'll answer your question with a question. If we have a student handbook, wouldn't it be more appropriate to put all of those policies that are deemed tied to student relations in the student handbook, and not put any of the policies in the program of studies?
Well, that's where it begs the question, why is it here?
Why are signed?
Only because it's always been here, and is this the only policy, I mean, or by omission, are we leaving something out that we think is important? So I agree with you.
Great question, and here, here's a great answer. You'll, you'll probably laugh a little bit. Well, the, our predecessors thought that was maybe important to have this in here, and so we, not knowing what to do, kept it in there.
We did update it.
But we began to ask the same question, why would we put just these select policies in when there's a landscape of policies that probably would be better represented in the student handbook as opposed to putting it in a program of study planning guide?
Don't disagree.
Great question.
Absolutely.
So do we know if these, these policies are duplicated in the student handbook, or they are?
They are.
Okay, so probably not needed in the program of studies.
Okay.
And we could remove that if that would be the direction, because we kind of like to do that, remove them for the middle school program of study and the elementary program of studies, as opposed to taking up text page.
We could put that in motion.
We could. Mrs. Levens, did you have a comment?
I just, I just know as a parent, I mean, as a parent, when my kids were in school, we did go through this pretty much with a fine tooth comb, and it was yet another place for us to be reminded of the protections that are in place, and these are important ones.
I think you could do it easily on the web. My concern is when we have so many publications, and we don't make the same correction in every one. Now you, now you have an inconsistency in policy somewhere, and so does, does a person reading this believe one thing and it's not a policy, and that, that's just a concern I have.
Madam President. Mrs. Neber.
I would like to move that we remove the policy part of the program of studies on the elementary, middle school, and high school level, as they seem to be redundant from our policy.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we remove the policies from the programs of studies on all three levels. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. There they went. They're gone. Okay, Dr. Strick, Kim, thank you very much.
We need to move approval, but now for the
Okay, well, thank you, Dan.
I would move approval of the 20, oh, 2014?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, isn't it? Yes.
Fourteen fifteen.
Program, uh, high school program planning guide.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Denny? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, we will move on to administrative services. We have a proclamation this week. Dr. Hinson, did you want to say anything about this proclamation?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Mrs. Neber.
Thank you. I would move the following proclamation, whereas the purpose of high school activities is to extend education beyond the formal classroom setting, and whereas participation in activities teaches our youth that it is a privilege and an honor to represent his or her high school, and whereas the community should be made aware of the cooperation, dedication, leadership, and other important values gained by students involved in school activities, and whereas the men and women working in school activities spend many hours guiding students. Now therefore, the Shawnee Mission Board of Education hereby proclaims October 13th through 15th, 2013, as Kansas High School Activities Week in Shawnee Mission, and encourages the community to reaffirm their support of high school activities and to show appreciation to the directors of those activities.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Denny. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to human resources. Dr. Hinson.
We have an agreement before you tonight, it's between the district and the NEA of the district in relation to our parent educators. It contains the same provisions as our other employee groups, so I would recommend adoption of this agreement tonight, please.
So move.
Second. It's hard to tell who that was there. Okay. Dr. Denny and Joan Levens. Okay. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Move on to approval of capital outlay fund resolution.
We have a resolution before you tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. DePiero if he'd go through the details, please.
Sure. As you're aware, every five years, we have to renew our capital outlay mill levy. This is the last year of our last five-year mill levy, and so we're renewing, we're requesting that you renew for the next five years, a maximum of eight mils to be assessed on an annual basis to support the capital outlay needs of the district. This levy, after the board affirms the resolution, the notice of publication will be placed in the, in the appropriate papers for two consecutive weeks, and if no protest petition is filed, the resolution becomes effective. The resolution, the resolution would, would cap the capital outlay at eight mils, which is the statewide maximum for capital outlay levies, and the board can make a decision on an annual basis of how much of that levy should be charged to the, to the individual homeowners. And so this is something that comes before you every five years, this is the time for renewal. There has been some changes to the capital outlay language within the state statutes, however, there are some triggering activities that have to occur before they allow those activi, before they allow those expanded uses of capital outlay to, to happen. The state has to fund the capital outlay level at 100% of state aid, and once they do that, the capital outlay authorization can include the, the purchase of software, band uniforms, and some other specific purposes. Since that trigger has not been tripped yet in this year, this resolution is the statuted resolution that we must use, and hopefully if they, if they ever do fund that capital outlay levy at 100% of state aid, then we can get some language change through the state legislature to allow us to go back and modify this resolution to allow those uses also. I just bring that up because this five-year resolution that we're passing now would not, with the current state statutes, would not allow us to use those expanded definitions of capital outlay. I think your guess is as good as mine, whether the state's ever going to fund 100% of state aid for capital outlay, but it, it's not foreseeable in the near future, and probably not in the next five years. So with that resolution, with this resolution, we'll proceed on with the publication and see if there's any protest petition filed. Russ, is there any other information I left off?
[inaudible].
Okay. That, this resolution will raise approximately 24 million. It's about 3 million per mil, and so the eight mils will raise approximately 24 million. So with the, with the passage of this resolution, then we'll proceed on with the next step, which would be publication, and our time waiting period before the resolution can actually be put into place.
Okay, very good.
We would move approval of the capital outlay fund resolution.
Second. Mrs. Neber. Thank you. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Move on to the purchase licensing. Dr. Hinson.
Thank you. As you are aware, we've received a very clear message from our community patrons in regard to communication, and so we continually look at how do we do a better job or a more effective job of communication. We've also learned this school year that we did not have the capability of pushing out a massive amount of information through texting and voicemail in a matter of minutes. And so in response to our inability to try to communicate with tens of thousands of phone numbers in a matter of five minutes or less, think about that, and also texting a massive amount of messages, we've looked at systems that would allow that capability. And so I'm going to ask Leanne Neal if she will share some information with you as we've looked at different possibilities to really address this issue in the school district. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Hinson. It's a pleasure to bring to you this evening for your consideration a recommendation to purchase a comprehensive notification service that will offer enhancement with regard to our communication abilities with parents, students, staff, and patrons, as well as position us, as Dr. Hinson recapped, in case there's need for widespread emergency messaging and notification. He is correct, we've heard from our stakeholders at the various meet and greet conversations, as well as through survey responses, that that's really important to them. And so earlier this year, we found that we have, we have a lot of things in place, but we have a lot of different services in place, and because our broadcast voice messaging system is currently locally hosted, it has some limitations, as we found, in terms of not being able, if we need to do a widespread district notification quickly, we cannot do that. We had done some notifications before, but we always cycled those on a weekend because of the limitation of our trunk lines. So this really brings all of those things together, you know, Center Voice, which is our broadcast voice messaging system right now, we had Textcaster, which was the texting piece, and then our IS department did kind of a homegrown email grouping, but again, it has limitations in terms of being able to get that kind of messaging out quickly. What we have before you this evening is a hosted service, so it's hosted outside of the district lines, and so it allows for that rapid, large-capacity notification, and it brings all of those services together. So I have this evening to bring up Josh Heisman, he is a representative with School Messenger, and he's going to do a brief recap. Some of you, I think, are aware a little bit about what the system is, but he's going to recap that for all of you, as well as for the patrons who are here with us and who may be watching, to let you know what the system is like. Josh?
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Bear with me just a second. Bring up the PowerPoint. Members of the board, Dr. Hinson, thank you for your time. My name is Josh Heisman, I am with School Messenger. I'm just going to kind of quickly run through a couple pieces of information about School Messenger and the capabilities involved there. Just a couple notes about School Messenger, we were founded in 1999, we're in fact the number one market share of all notification providers in K-12, so approximately 17 million students, which is about one-third of all students nationwide we service. You can see some of the largest districts that we service, New York City, Houston, Seattle, Orange County, Florida, Dallas, Jefferson County, Colorado, Philadelphia. And in the area, we actually service Blue Valley School District, where I actually implemented School Messenger as an employee at Blue Valley at the time. We've been at Blue Valley for about seven years now, Lawrence, Gardner Edgerton, Salina, Lee Summit, North Kansas City Schools, Independence, many more. And beyond K-12, we actually service the Coast Guard, Navy, National Guard, first responders, and colleges and universities in different capacities. And so you can imagine the amount of rigor involved to get certified with them and to be able to send notifications on their behalf. Our big emphasis is on support, we have a little bit over 100 employees, and about a half of that is dedicated to support and project management, so there, our support is really second to none, and that's in multiple US locations, and we actually have a 97% renewal rate with our customers because of that. Lots of awards that we won, but most recently, the one that I, that we're pretty proud of is the Stevie Award, important particularly in the business environment due to our tech support. So we actually won an award to, to back up our excellent tech support. A unique note to you will be our Skyward partnership, so as I'm sure you know, you guys are moving to a Skyward student information system next fall, we have a partnership with them unlike any other notification provider, where we actually work hand in hand with them to automate data, and then we have some parent portal integration that allows parents to actually control preferences too. And then, and in fact, it'll be a easy, no-cost transition from your existing system, which we'll integrate with today, to Skyward at that time. Couple things that really set us apart from a lot of our competition is our architecture. Fully hosted, as Leanne mentioned, three data centers, one on each coast, and then up in the Midwest. And again, at the end of the day, this is an emergency notification system, it's great for attendance calls and sending out newsletters and things like that, but when you have an emergency, you need to be able to rely on it, to be able to send phone calls out quickly. And so these, these points back that up. Six telco partners, carrier-grade voiceover IP, we use true text messaging, SMS text messaging, and last but not least, we've actually been awarded a patent for our architecture. Everyone always asks, how fast can you send phone calls? A good rule of thumb is we can call every single phone number in your system, in your student information system, at least once in 10 to 15 minutes, often even faster than that. Obviously, it can take longer for retries if a number is busy and there's congestion, but 10 to 15 minutes, everyone's contacted. Never mind email and text messaging, which can obviously go much, much faster than that, that goes out almost immediately. A recent example of our architecture being put to the test about a year ago with Superstorm Sandy, we actually sent 25 million messages in the peak of that, just over the period of that weekend. So, and that was just phone calls, in fact. Some of the features now I want to mention real quick, as Leanne mentioned, we can actually combine phone, email, text messaging, social media, Facebook and Twitter, and RSS functionality, which allows you to post to your website. So what's nice is literally from your handheld phone, you know, Dr. Hinson could launch a, a notification in the entire district, right from his phone, tap a message, and it could go to all those different places, the website, and Facebook, and Twitter, and send phone calls. We do support automatic translation, including Spanish, we support 14 phone languages and 62 email languages. So it allows, especially for ad hoc messaging, you can reach a lot more families that way through that automatic translation feature, especially for someone like me who, outside of my English skill set, is very limited, so it's nice for the ad hoc translation. And then we can do automated personalized attendance and lunch balance calls and emails. So it can actually call home, and your child missed these periods, or your child has a low lunch balance, so, you know, negative $10, you know, please log on and add more money to their account. Couple screenshots here I've added for you, our classroom messaging actually gives teachers the capability to message their classrooms individually. We actually rolled out this capability while I was at Blue Valley. So every teacher within the Blue Valley School District can actually, they see their classes and can contact their students by email or by phone through this system. So we can do the same thing with the Skyward integration and with your existing system too, to allow teachers to utilize the system. You can very specifically target recipients by different pieces of data, including what bus they ride, or what activity they're in. So in this example, I've got all the ninth and 10th graders who play baseball, basketball, or football, you know, and you could target down to, by what bus they ride. So it allows you to be very granular, and that really helps overcome the concern of message fatigue, you know, parents getting too many phone calls, too many emails, you can really target just to the people who might be of interest. I'd like to mention desktop alerts. This actually allows you to install a piece of software on every computer in the district, and actually pop up an alert on the screen. So it's another way to get a message out, especially sometimes you can't hear the PA systems in a certain room, or, or you know, what have you, or you don't want to alarm, you know, someone, so desktop alerts is another way to get a message out very quickly. Broadcast templates I mentioned is a, I talked about earlier, is a quick way, you've got a lockdown situation, for example, and you need to quickly send out a message, you have this pre-crafted message, you can just tap a button and send it out, and you don't have to sit there and think about it. Very advanced automated reporting, here you can see actually it knows whether the call was answered, if it went to a machine, if it was busy. That's very important to obviously keep your data up to date. So for example, if I have my disconnected phone numbers, which means it's a bad phone number for a parent, you can automate that report back to the schools, and then they can follow up with the parents to get updated information and contact data, and we can automate all of those reports. This is an example of our parent portal, this actually allows parents to log in and set their preferences by phone number or email address of how they want to be contacted. So a parent might say, for emergency calls, you know, call all of my phone numbers, but if it's weather-related, or it's attendance-related, only call my cellphone, for example, or don't even call me, send me an email. So parents can again, control how they want to be contacted. That's it for our notification That's it for our notification service. Are there any questions about that? And then, I'll mention custom apps real quick.
Any questions? I guess not.
Okay. So, the other part of this is actually a mobile app for the district. So, we'll actually develop an iPhone and Android app for the district, for parents. So, parents will be able to open their iPhone, go to the App Store, and download a Shawnee Mission School District app with your logo. The School Messenger name is not anywhere on it. So, obviously, this allows you to deliver key content and a mobile platform for parents. And of course, that's what parents are expecting nowadays, to be able to get content right on their phone. We do support Android and iPhone, and I don't think I need to convince you of the use of cell phones and how widespread that is, but on average, they're saying Americans spend two hours and thirty-eight per minute glued to their mobile devices, perhaps playing Angry Birds, but nonetheless, they are using those mobile devices more and more. So, it's another way to reach parents. Things like calendars, lunch menus, directories, sports schedules, sports scores, results, notifications, and social media. And then, we are this spring going to be adding capabilities to check grades and attendance right on the phone as well. Key feature of this is self-heating, so we pull right from the website. So, it's not another place the district has to go update. Once its news is added to the district website, it'll automatically show up inside the app. Here's an example of Minneapolis Public Schools. We did an app for them. You can see their website on the left, and you can actually see the app on the right. So, we really preserve that branding of the district throughout the mobile app that parents are used to. So, you can see some of the different categories they chose to add. I just wanted to show you this because there's actually a photo slideshow in this example. So, we can have an automatic kind of rotating photo banner that gets updated automatically inside the app. So, and we really call it custom mobile apps because we can really design it specific to the district and meet your needs and your parents' needs. And here's just another example layout. Some different news photos, et cetera. Great. All right.
Any questions?
Questions, yes.
Okay. I guess not. Thank you very much.
I just, I actually just wanted to make, point out some things, and that actually questions, but there was, we did have questions when these were presented to us as a board, and a couple of things that were made clear, and one is that this group was chosen because of its superb service, that they have a five-minute guarantee, which is really, really the major benefit when compared against its competition. Also, it has a lot of automatic features, but we discussed preserving the elementary school nurses following up with the elementary students rather than an automatic callback system, which, which we all felt very, was very important to our students' safety. And I think, and then also just the feature of the pop-up emergency feature, that that was protect, when your laptop is connected and projecting to students, there was a feature that protected that from showing up in the classroom, that it actually would just appear for the teacher, so that the teacher then could appropriately respond to that. And those were features that really recommended this system to us.
And I would say that certainly the service is, is very important, having that, and they, you haven't had to pay out yet on your guarantee.
No one's taken us up on it. And I can tell you, when I was at Blue Valley, and I was a customer, obviously, so I dealt with their support and was very pleased with it.
Is that a school district in Kansas?
That is correct.
Just curious.
Couple miles south.
Okay, thank you.
And another important piece is that they are a recognized partner with Skyward. As we looked at the applications and the products that are out there, there certainly are others in the, in the industry, but for the price quote that they gave for the notification system and being a recognized business partner with Skyward and being able to dovetail in nicely with that, that was really critical for us and for information services as they migrate to that.
Mrs. Mack?
Madam President, I would move for approval to the purchasing, purchase of licensing and support for School Messenger.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Neighbors?
I would just like to clarify, you said the two dollars and ten cents per student stays that way. So, if you give increases to your people, we're not absorbing that, is that correct? I'm just, you very rarely see.
Perpetuity.
Where it, it just stays and it doesn't go up three percent or two percent each year. So, as long as we renew, it stays there.
That's correct.
As long as we, as I understand, as long as we don't have an interruption in service and we continue, it's a dollar fifty, a dollar and fifty cents for the notification and the sixty cents for the mobile application, and those pricing structures will remain into perpetuity the same, no increases.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Zila, I will comment. This is not fifty-seven, seven-fifty, a brand-new expenditure for the district. So, we have expenditures now that will be removed from this. And so, this is the item, the cost for this item, but again, the services that we're using now will be subtracted away from this. So, what we're going to spend is substantially less than this amount of money as far as a new expenditure.
Very good.
And Dr. Henson, may I add, too, that our partners at Valley View Bank, who have been longtime supporters of the text messaging Shawnee Mission Alert, they are aware of our desire to have a more comprehensive platform, and they have indicated that they will continue to support that commitment, to continue to help offset portions of the cost of our communication service.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to election of delegate to the KASB convention.
I would like to nominate Joan Levens for our delegate and Donna Bisfield as our alternate.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No? Is there any no's? No. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mrs. Levens and Mrs. Bisfield, for attending that convention on our behalf. We appreciate that very much. Okay, reports to the board. Dr. Henson?
You know, one of the things that I've certainly learned over the last several months, and by the way, I guess maybe the listening tour is over, but my schedule hasn't eased any at all, so I'm not sure quite how that works. But the importance of us really listening to our constituents of things that they want as our customers, if you will, we received a very loud and clear message in relation to communication. We've addressed that tonight through School Messenger and timely and appropriate communication, even the mobile app. That's something new for us as well, for those of us that have a few more years under our belt, we're going, well, how do you really work mobile apps? But that's a request we've had from our community, and so, we're able to do that. We've had a number of other requests, and so, we've heard a lot about technology, about safety and security, energy efficiency, some really building needs that we have as well. The question becomes, well, how do we address those issues? Because it all takes money. And so, in working with our partners in education, George K. Baum and Company, they're going to give us some things to think about tonight, because the things that we've heard from our community, most of those things do take money in order for that to happen. So, tonight, we're going to talk about potential short-term solutions to finance some of the things we need to do and some long-term solutions as well. So, with us tonight, Dick Barto, I think is going to come first, representing George K. Baum and Company. And Dick and Roger is with him as well, as he's going to come now, and others have put together some really thought-provoking things for us. And again, I want to reiterate the importance we've heard very clearly from our community of things they would like for us to do. A part of our charge is to say, "Is there a way for us to do these things?" And so, with that tonight, we're going to give you some things to lay awake tonight and really think about in relation to funding and finance. So, Dick, we'll start with you, Dick Barto, George K. Baum and Company.
Thank you, Dr. Henson. Madam President, it's truly our pleasure to be here tonight and present a couple of ideas on how to effectively and most economically access the capital markets as we go forward. David Artterberry is a third partner of our team, a member of our team. David couldn't be here tonight. He drew the short star, so he had to go out of town, but anyway. So, but he did want me to extend his greetings to you. The first thing I'm going to do is start off by congratulating you, congratulating you and the staff, for you have positioned this district very well to move forward as you look at your capital needs. We have a great number of capital needs. You've got twenty-seven thousand students, folks. You're always going to have capital needs. And in doing so, in your past actions, along with staff and recommendations of George K. Baum and Company, we've positioned the district very well to address a number of these capital needs as we're talking about. We've put together a packet for you, and I think we've passed that packet around. On the right side of the packet is just some information material, okay? And you can refer to that maybe if you're having trouble falling asleep tonight or something along the line. But there is some very important information. First of all, there's a Moody's report. The district currently is rated triple-A by Moody's Investor Services. Roger, how many schools are?
I think there's just two, two school districts in Kansas that have a triple-A rating. And so, you're in, it's very high rating, not very many nationally. So, something to be very proud of, and it's years of strong financial management that have allowed you to accomplish that.
Also included in there is the schedule of all your debt payments and of your general obligation bonds that you currently have outstanding. And then, in the last section of that is an official statement, which is the offering document and the final offering circular put together for the refunding. I would point out that last year, around this time, we concluded a refunding for the district, and folks, you only saved about a million dollars. We saved the district, you saved, the taxpayers of this district, twelve million. That's twelve and six zeros, twelve million dollars in future cost. I congratulate you on that. I congratulate the board, I congratulate staff. We are very, very proud to be a part of that financing. As I said, you all have twenty-seven thousand students, you're always going to have capital needs. The district has had elections in the past. In nineteen ninety-four, we had an election. In two thousand and four, we had an election. Twenty years ago, we had an election. Ten years ago, we had an election. We've done some preliminary numbers, and please understand that these are preliminary in nature. We're not recommending these numbers, that you go forward with these numbers. We'd want to sit down with staff and refine all the numbers we're talking about tonight. But as we go forth, if the district chose in late two thousand and fourteen, in the early part of two thousand and fifteen, we could go to the voters and we could ask for a bond issue of somewhere between a hundred and ninety, two hundred million dollars. Let's call it two hundred million dollars for round purposes. We would issue that, much like you did in two thousand and four. We would not issue all two hundred million dollars at one time. We would issue it in tranches, which would then allow us then to, we would issue that over a period of time, which allows us to spread the debt out a little bit. But the key thing is, is that this would not require a mill levy increase in your bond and interest fund. So, I go back to that positioning talk. You all have positioned the district very well. As you look at your long-term capital needs, and we're talking about this general obligation bond issue for major, major capital improvements, long-term capital needs, in two thousand and fourteen, late two thousand and fourteen, early two thousand and fifteen, we're looking at two hundred million dollars, somewhere thereabout, with a no-mill levy increase in your bond and interest fund. But prior to that, how do we address some of these other things we have going on? Again, with the approval of the ongoing capital outlay levy tonight, in which you've taken action on, and hopefully, we'll get approval here in a couple of weeks, that's going to generate an additional amount of money. I think Bob referred to it, about twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars. And using that money, and we're not recommending using all of it, please understand that. But if we did use all of it, let's, let's take the total parameter of the thing, but if we did all of them, we could, we've run numbers that say that we could issue somewhere hundred and ten, hundred and twenty million dollars. Now, we're not recommending that you issue all of that on capital outlay bonds. Those have to be repaid over five years. You have other needs in that capital outlay, and I think Bob pointed those out, that you can't probably bond for at this particular time. But it does give us a source of revenue in which we can use to repay bonds of a fairly significant amount to address some of the safety concerns if you have to move principal's office around. You know, we could access that money in a fairly quick fashion there, so to speak. So, the capital outlay bonds is something that we could bring back to the board in a fairly short turnaround time, and hopefully, have the money to you by the end of the, end of the calendar year, maybe somewhere in the first half of two thousand and fourteen.
I think the district has done capital outlay bonds in the past, and this is not a new thing. And the, a couple of things, that capital outlay fund, we're, you know, we would have to work through the details of any bond issue that you would decide to do if you decided to bond through capital outlay. That particular fund, along with special ed and your contingency reserve, those three funds are really what the rating agencies look at when they look at your fund balances or your reserves. So, you need to keep some liquidity, and you need to wa, you know, there's a, there's a kind of a tension between keeping your fund balances up and doing the capital expenditures that you need. There's a balance there. And so, we have to respect all of that, and that capital outlay fund is also a place where we, you know, preserve much-needed fund balances. So, but a bond issue would allow you to actually raise your fund balance in that fund rather than spending it all at once, if you will, at least over a three-to-four-year period. You could temporarily up your fund balances rather than, you know, spending large chunks of that fund balance immediately. So, there are some strategies we can employ that I think could, could be beneficial if you decide to pursue them. Another thought on, on the bond and interest levy, you know, and again, I would echo that you don't have debt issuance policies that we follow, but you've certainly got very solid debt issuance practices that have been consistently followed and that have allowed you to put, you know, to be in the position that you're in. And that's, you follow for twenty-plus years. And that's why you can do some of the things you can do without a tax increase or without a mill levy increase. But the other thing I wanted to mention was, your bond and interest levy, if you just look at that fund, it's lower than the neighboring school districts by quite a bit. I think that funds eight-plus mills, and your neighboring districts are at sixteen and eighteen mills. So, we're not talking about how much you need to spend, or what's wise to spend, or what your needs are. We're just telling you that the capacity is there as you look at these things. You, you know, don't feel, if the question is, "Can we afford it?", you know, I think the answer is yes, that the ability to afford the things that you decide to do in the future is there.
And I would commend Roger on that because I did notice that he did not mention those other school districts to the south. It's kind of like Michigan and Ohio State. You know, Ohio State refers to that school up north, and Michigan refers to it, that other school in the south. So, we won't talk about those other schools by name, but yes, you do have one of the lower bond and interest mill levies in the area, so to speak, there, if you will. But anyway, it looks to me like, so, just in brief summary, okay, and again, don't pencil in any of these numbers, but if you look in the next five years, out to two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, okay? We have forty or fifty million dollars, and we don't know what that number is. We actually have a hundred million, but let's cut it in half and say we have forty or fifty million dollars of capital outlay bonds we could do immediately. We go to the voters, two thousand and fourteen, early fifteen, two hundred million, there's two hundred and fifty million. The nice thing about it is, is that assuming that everything stays the same and all, and that's the only thing we have to base our assumptions on, two thousand and eighteen or nineteen, we could possibly do another fifty million off the capital outlay bonds. And guess what happens in two thousand and twenty-four? We can probably do another couple hundred million dollars worth of general obligation bonds, and that's assuming basically no growth. So, we've tried to be very conservative as we've looked at, at not only interest rates, but growth practices and things going forward. So, as I've said, I think we've positioned, or you have positioned yourself very well. We've been fortunate to be a part of it, and I commend you for that. The other part on the left side of the packet is a reimbursement resolution, and we're not recommending it for adoption at this particular time, but we did want to present it to you, because as you go forward, if you decide, we decide to issue some capital outlay bonds, one of the first things we'll want to do is pass a reimbursement resolution. The IRS gets a little sticky when you start spending money and then you reimburse yourself, and they want to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. So, what this allows us to do is go ahead and spend that money and then reimburse ourselves up to a period of time for those capital outlay bonds while the bond issue is being processed. So, you can go ahead with all your projects, knowing that the bond issue is going to reimburse you for those projects, and this just... And this just gets the approval sign from the IRS and the SEC and all those things. Any questions you might have about your addressing your capital needs in the next 10 years?
Why aren't you in Washington making this?
So Mr. Barto, if, and obviously, we're not ready, but if we were to issue GO or capital outlay bonds, which takes a vote of the board, if we were to do that now, which we can't do now, the current interest rate is approximately...
Well, you're talking a five-year interest, five-year interest bond, because these bonds have to be repaid in five years. And you're talking less than 3%, and then probably less than two and a half. But again, depending on what happens with, Dr. Denny says, our good friends in Washington, you know, I hate to say all bets are off, but market, the interest rate market is very, very good right now. It's a great time to be borrowing money. Probably as good as it's been for a long, 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 long time. So it's a great time to access the capital market. And so I would look for interest rate, two and a half percent, Roger?
Yeah, I don't even know that it would be two and a half. If you were selling bonds today, it would be between two and two and a half percent.
Just incredible. It'd sell.
Any other questions for these gentlemen tonight?
I do thank you, I do commend you. I just, you know, it's not often we get up, able, we're able to get up in front of people and say, folks, you know, we've got some really, really, really good news, and we're able to do that tonight, and I commend you, I thank you, and I congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes, yes.
I understand that the capital outlay bonds do not count towards our statutory debt limit.
That's correct.
Do you understand that statement? I hope this is a good question. Would it have an impact on our AAA rating?
I don't, I think, I think it'll have a positive impact on our AAA rating, quite frankly, because we'll, what we're wanting to do is be able to show them that we've been spending down reserves, that we're going to replenish those reserves and pay them off, and we have a plan in place in which to secure those reserves as we go forward.
If you use the capital outlay bonds as a tool to, on a short-term basis, at least raise your reserves, it should be possible.
And, and the other thing I forgot to tell, and I apologize here, but the other thing is, is we will continue to monitor all your debt. And when an economic refunding makes sense, we can guarantee you that we'll be here knocking on your door saying, folks, we need to look at this refunding, and, and don't hold us to saving 12 million dollars again. We will save you some money.
Next week.
That's awesome. Great. Thank you guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So a thing to ponder, several items to ponder. So as we look at the messages we've received from the community about some of these issues that are very pressing, we do have the opportunity to issue bonds through capital outlay, which simply take a, a vote of the board, does not have any impact on the levy at all, to fund some imminent needs. So we are aggressively, I'll use that word tonight, we are aggressively trying to look at plans in relation to safety and security, technology, some of these energy efficiency things, and see if we can really take advantage of the market now, not knowing what's going to happen with the market, because it has changed recently. So that's something that we could bring to you over the next several months. Now, in relation to really long-range capital plans, they talk to you about really what that looks like as far as a bond issue in the future. But with the numbers they, they gave to you tonight, I want to reemphasize that does not include any levy increase. I think that's a very important factor in this process. So as we look at the concerns, again, we have imminent, what can we address now? And then obviously, if we want to take care of probably everything that's being asked of us, that will probably include a, a bond issue down the road. None of this discussion includes a levy increase.
Thank you, Dr. Henson.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to Caring for Kids, Dr. Henson.
You know, and I was remiss as well, but really, that was quite a compliment to Mr. DePiero and his staff as well, for great fiscal management through the years. And so congratulations, there is not a salary increase tied to that. But it's really...
I don't think there's been one before.
It's a great compliment to you, Mr. DePiero, and your department, really fiscal management of the district, so congratulations.
We'll all remember to thank you.
We'll send you a thank you card. Tonight, we want to show a video to you first. I'm going to start off with the video in relation to caring for kids. Make sure everybody's brought up on the same page, and so we'll have some other information to share with you. But if we can, we'll start the video now in relation to caring for kids. Thank you, Mrs. Wintering.
The death of 17-year-old Joseph Ray Ray Winston has left various neighborhood organizations...
One out of seven kids at Roosevelt is homeless.
There had been a few murders just recently.
People are very, very clear in some cases, I don't want my child going to that school.
One of the things about the suburbs is, we're nice. And I did a study of the word "nice" once, it comes from a Latin word meaning to ignore. And we are good at ignoring.
Everybody in the Portland area kind of knows what Roosevelt High School meant. It meant, you know, gangland, you know, you'd heard about stabbings.
And the original idea was simply like a one-day cleanup day. Why don't we do it connected with serving the community?
I knew a lot of people at Cal, but I didn't know how many. And, you know, I was more shocked than anybody when 1,500 people showed up.
Everybody was kind of walking around with tears in their eyes, because something had happened, you know, and that was kind of the start of it.
I've never seen anything like it. I hope more churches will emulate what Southlake's doing.
Our students need to see that there, there are adults and communities that really care about them as people.
The school, they're the experts, they're the educational experts. They know what their needs are. Can we help fill the needs?
She began a clothes closet, where people could donate clothes, and every morning, kids could come in and basically take what they needed, no questions asked.
There's a fear there that, you know, these church people are going to come in evangelizing and trying to get all your, your kids and your staff saved.
The best way to convince people that you don't have an agenda is to not have an agenda. And so that was our plan. We had no agenda, we had no idea even really what we were doing, quite honestly.
Southlake's approach is more of, let me show you through the works, through my actions, what love really is.
When I got to Roosevelt, there were 1,600 people in the gym. First night I went out there, there were 30.
Myself, I, I don't think I've ever played any harder than that day. Just the energy and the positivity from like, all those people that were there, just cheering for us, it was like, amazing.
The girls at Roosevelt, each one is trying in their own heart of hearts to be the Roosevelt Rose Princess.
So they said, at a minute, they're going to hold their hand up, and they're going to stop you. So you've got to stop, make sense. You're done.
They just, they loved me. They, they gave me so much love in return. And here I was, just giving them two hours on a Wednesday.
Come here. Julita, get in here, girl.
Southlake's giving a lot to us, but I also believe that they are learning a lot from us about the realities of being in the education system, in an urban district, and, and what partnership in a respectful way looks like.
Turned out to be a lot more stuff off the field than on the field, which was, was hard. Day by day, it was very hard for me.
They had no idea who Neil O'Max was. You know, and he, he's thinking he's going to walk in, he's going to be this NFL quarterback, and everybody's going to go, wow, you know? And I told him, Neil, they're not going to care who you are until they know you care about them.
You know, it's not about coaching there, see? It's about mentoring and being a father, and being a brother, and being a driver, and being a parole officer. Christian Swain is unconditional. He'll love them despite them not showing up on time, despite the fact they might not give 100% of effort, despite that they got the D in that class, that he helped them so much that they should have got a B. He'll do what's necessary to make that kid feel loved.
Suddenly Nike decides they're going to give these kids uniforms. And suddenly Nike decides they're going to head up the effort to get an artificial turf put out there. Suddenly Nike just decides they want to be part of what's going on.
I think Nike was propelled at a, at a quicker, higher level to get involved with Roosevelt because of the association with Southlake Church.
I was so jacked, so excited, have our kids, have our players get to play on a real field.
All of these groups come together has done something that none of us anticipated. And I feel like this was one of the things where after a while, you just kind of get out of the way, you just let God go.
Southlake isn't saving Roosevelt. It's not, Roosevelt's got to save itself. And Roosevelt is saving itself, but it's getting help from lots of outside partners to do that. And Southlake is a key, integral player in that help.
You know, to be involved there just for the short term is totally not acceptable.
This is a beautiful thing. This is putting your faith to work, putting legs to your faith. And if there's a way to continue this, I want to be a part of it, I want to support it.
It's a beautiful story, I think, of a church showing up just to support an underserved school.
I'll save some of my, my comments for the latter part. You know, we've talked a lot about partnerships. And so one of you, Mrs. Mack, has been highly involved in caring for kids and really making this happen. So turn the microphone over to you, Mrs. Mack.
Dr. Henson, that video was shown to me by Gary Schmitz, who is head of Caring for Kids. And I think that, that a couple of taglines just jumped out at me, partnership in a respectful way. Caring for Kids is an organization that connects churches, businesses, and community organizations to serve in partnership with neighborhood schools in order to help children reach their full potential. I did say churches. We have had churches volunteer for our schools for a number of years. It is a faith-friendly organization, not faith-based. It has been very successful in Olatha the last several years. There are over 30 schools in Olatha that use the Caring for Kids partnership network. The way to have no agenda is to have no agenda. Dr. Barlin Berry, who's the superintendent for Olatha, told us, there hasn't been an agenda. This works. What happens is, is that churches, organizations, organizations and businesses work with the schools in partnership to provide volunteers. They don't bring anything new, they meet the needs of the school exactly where they are. For example, MVP, my volunteer pal, churches provide volunteers for that, watchdogs, whether it's help with room parties, lunch buddies, et cetera. They do not bring new things. They serve the school, they serve the students, they serve that community around the school where they are. Rachel Larson, who is our MVP coordinator here in the Shawnee Mission School District, has gone to churches and businesses and organizations already, encouraging them to become MVPs in our schools. Pam Hale is here from the PTA, and we've had a conversation about caring for kids as well. Nothing will ever replace our PTA and our great volunteers that we have in the PTA, but they work alongside each other, supporting the kids, because that's why we're here, is to support and help our children reach their full potential. Let me tell you what's happened so far. It's pretty exciting. Dr. Henson has spoken to a group of churches and businesses to get them fired up, and they showed this video. And I watched all your faces, actually, while you guys were watching the video, and that's exactly how people were looking. They were looking very intently at the content. After that, Gary Schmitz had Teri Geenens, who is the suburban director for Caring for Kids, and she is working directly with the Shawnee Mission School District. What happens, we targeted seven schools to start with. Within three weeks, I believe, it jumped to 12, because so many schools wanted to get involved. And Mrs. Fort Miller has been a great advocate and great partner trying to launch this. We brought the principals in of those 12 schools and spoke with them and kind of explained the program to, to them. And then we had the SMEF breakfast in the morning, and that day for lunch, we had, if you can imagine this room with 12 tables, one for each school that's going to, to launch the program, and lunch, and a principal, and a facilitator, and businesses, and churches having representatives there around each of those tables. It was flat-out exciting. I know Leanne Neal was there, Dr. Henson was there, of course, he addressed the group, and Mrs. Fort Miller and I were there. To see these organizations talk to the principal together was incredible. And then it's launching. I need to tell you that now principals are meeting with the businesses and the churches and communities, organizations onsite. Miriam, Fire Department, Police Department were there, all these different groups. And what it's doing is basically an umbrella organization to coordinate all the partnerships for each of the schools. As I said again, has an incredible success rate. Casey Kaye was here, watching what was happening at what we called the Round Table Luncheon with all the principals. It's pretty exciting, and, and I'm excited to see what happens next. I hope you all are too. Mrs. Fort Miller, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that we have so many kids benefiting by this, and part of the group said, every time we tell somebody, they tell five more people, and, you know, being the math lady, that gets exponential. So, you know, I get excited about everybody continuing to share that good message.
I'll, I'll highlight, one of our partnerships is with New City Church, which is, which is at 75th and Neiman. And boy, they were ready to jump on board immediately. We happened to be there on a school tour this morning, and you should see, there were moms getting ready to be planted. That New City Church just happened to drop by, which leads me to the next thing that's going to happen at the end of the month. There is going to be a cleanup day at a couple of our schools. But the great thing about what's going to happen with the Caring for Kids network and doing it under that umbrella, is that that landscaping will be maintained. It won't just be a one-shot deal where they drop in the plants and never water them. They're going to maintain that through the year. So that's the report. Dr. Henson, what am I missing?
I just want to reemphasize, the, the umbrella approach is so very important to us. One of the things we heard from principals about this church, or this business, or this group that wanted to be involved, and so now it's all coordinated together. And so it was really great to watch Shawnee Mission forward, you know, and then a faith-based group, and then a Rotary, or Kiwanis, or Lions, or the Fire Department, to all really come together for a common cause. And I think that's one of the things that's so very important for us as a school district, that really aligns resources together for a common cause. And that consistency and uniformity is so very important, really, to the school district. So great things are occurring.
I might add, no cost.
No cost to us.
To the district. So basically, Caring for Kids is funded by the Citywide Prayer Movement. Teri Geenens is a, an employee of Caring for Kids, and she's here for Shawnee Mission, and she's been a great resource for the principals, I believe. So if you have any questions about it, Rachel Larson knows about it, Mrs. Fort Miller, Dr. Henson, and myself right now. So are there any questions anybody has? It's exciting. Yes, Mrs. Levin, I'm sorry, I'm...
I'd love to see a list of the schools and the businesses that are, and the churches that are involved.
We'll try and get that for you. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Dr. Henson, we will move on to comments from board members. Had a good time walking through schools today, seeing Rising Star. It is great, yes. It was great to get back in.
It was great to get back into the schools again. I have a couple of things, just because it's been a lot of activities going on, the Shawnee Mission Band Festival, one of my very favorite things, was earlier this month, and every band was outstanding. I was so proud. I, I know they're all going on to their various festivals, I think Moransburg is coming up very soon, and they were, each, each one was as good as the next. It was just an outstanding evening, or a beautiful evening at that. Last week was also a week of concerts, I think it's at the end of the first quarter, so I was at middle school and high school concerts, which were very fun. And again, the talent of the kids in this district always just amazes me. And as Dr. Henson mentioned first, of course, our hearts go out so, so very much to the families of, of the students from Shawnee Mission West, Andre Maloney, and for our principal, Linda Tinsley, who passed away yesterday. It's very tough, especially when a student's life ends, but the family is doing well and has a ton of support from the West community, which is so nice. Any other comments, folks?
Okay, this is good, Brian.
I move with the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss personal, personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel. The meeting will reconvene at 8:45? Uh, 9 o'clock? 30 minutes? At 9 o'clock. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose no. Thank you. Motion carries.